Welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, eight thirty a.m., Wednesday, November first, two thousand and twenty-three, at City Hall Council Chambers. At this time, we'll ask Major Thomas Richmond with the Salvation Army to come forward. Do we have Major Richmond? No, all right, Ms. Barnaby, would you be willing to give us the prayer this morning?
We'd be happy to.
Thank you. Please stand, and then we'll say the pledge.
O Creator, we thank you for fellowship and for family. We ask that you strengthen us and inspire us with your love. Pour out your love and grace upon us, and let the words of our mouth and the meditations of our hearts and minds be acceptable to thee, O Lord. And together the people say, amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Good morning. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Farm City Week, which I'll read on behalf of the mayor. Farm City Week, November ninth through eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas in two thousand and twenty-three, we celebrate the sixty-eighth annual Farm City Week celebration in Manatee County. And whereas Farm City Week is a celebration of agriculture and the contributions the industry has made to the local economy and to the health of all citizens through the food they eat. And whereas the purpose of Farm City Week is to educate the community about the diversity of agriculture production in Manatee County. And whereas Manatee County agriculture continues to be a major contributor to the local economy with a market value of approximately three hundred and sixty million dollars in products sold. And whereas more than two hundred and thirteen thousand acres, or thirty-seven percent of the land in Manatee County, is currently used in agriculture production. And whereas there are approximately seven hundred and fifty farms of diverse size and type of production called in Manatee County home. And whereas the two thousand and twenty-three Farm City Week theme is innovations in agriculture, bringing attention to the use of technology in agriculture production. And whereas the public is invited to join the celebration through the festivities held as part of Farm City Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim November ninth through eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Farm City Week in Bradenton, and encourage all citizens to celebrate agriculture and its importance, its importance to individuals, families, our community, our state, our nation, and our world. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have here today? Come forward, please. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Honorable Commissioners, for proclaiming this as Farm City Week, November ninth through the eighteenth. As you know, the theme is innovation in agriculture. I'm here to tell you that farmers were the first environmentalists. It's very, very important. I was a farmer all my adult life, and it was, it's very, very important that we take care of our land and our waters so that we have, for the next generation, that we have farming in our community, and I hope that continues in Manatee County. It's very, very important in Manatee. We are second after tourism. So yes, it's lovely that we have all these tourists coming down and they support our economy. However, agriculture also supports our economy. And, you know, it's very important that we use innovations in agriculture, that we use technology. We are scientists. We don't just play in dirt, which is the fun part. We are scientists. We, and many of us are educated scientists, and we do use all sorts of technology to help us. I mean, yes, it's, it's getting down there and getting dirty. Technology is great, but you still have to have hands-on, eyes-on. But technology is so important, and it's being used in Manatee County. You know, I mean, it's, it's being used, we're soil scientists, farmers are everything. You know, we, we are soil scientists, we are chemists, we are, you know, we have to understand so much, and that is helping us. We, we can use less land and produce more, and in a very sound, environmentally healthy way. So we really thank you for supporting us. And, no, I don't have a white cowboy hat, and I don't have boots, and I don't tell a lot of funny stories, but boy, we, we, we miss Ralph, I'm sure, but we're passing it on, and we hope that, and, and really appreciate that, that you are proclaiming this as, as Farm City Week. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we know that Ralph is, is missed with everything he's did, and last night I saw video with my wife in nineteen eighty-nine with his dad, and my wife was, worked with him at the courthouse, and so that family has meant a lot to this community for a long time, and it'll, that legacy will carry on forever, but we're glad, you know, that he's got some time now to do things and, and that part of it, so.
Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to share with you all that we'll be kicking off Farm City Week this Saturday, November fourth, at the Bradenton Public Market. The four-H Youth Leadership Council with their, with Extension Agent Alexandra Draper and the Palmetto High Future Farmers of America, along with their teacher Julie Tillet, will showcase various aspects of farm life, and the four-H team will be selling handmade goat's milk soap and plants. And a big thanks to the market manager, Heather Emsol, for having us. Thank you.
Ms. Barnaby has got some comments from the council.
I just have to say one thing, if Mr. Garrison isn't here, but it still has to be said, don't speak bad about the farmer with your mouth full. We hear that.
I almost added that in. I know Ralph very well, and I thought, no, only he can say it.
Ms. Coker.
Quote him.
You know, as a Realtor, I get people when they're just being introduced to Bradenton, and they ask me about, you know, what about Bradenton makes us so unique and different? And I think it's our agrarian roots. I think those roots are strong, you're tied to the earth, and I think you're a big, big reason why we are who we are, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Perry.
Mayor, I just want to also express my appreciation to the agricultural community. I had the opportunity to go out with Mr. Henderson to the, to the east part of the county where a lot of the agricultural areas are, and, and spend a couple of days out there with him and some of the local folks. Buddy Keen was with us, and, you know, go out there and spend a lunch over at the livestock store and talk to a lot of the farmers. We've visited probably, literally, well over twenty farms out there, and, and to understand the contributions and the historical contributions to this area as well as the city was very enlightening for me. You know, I came from the West, I understand a little bit, I'm a city boy, but I'm always intrigued by it, and that's why I took the time to go out there. And they're just salt-of-the-earth people that, that do the hard work for this country, produce the, the host of different products by using the earth, and, and it's integral to both the beginnings and, and the future of the country. And so I just, I want to say thank you for what you all do, and I'm sorry that Ralph, Ralph isn't leading the charge anymore. I got some pictures from him because he, his, his one bucket list thing was go to the Albuquerque Bloom Fiesta, and so I was able to get him some VIP passes for it, right? Yeah, and he said it was worth it, and, and also, I, I just want to say that, you know, I hope that, that these folks know that even though we're in the city, we, we love you folks for what you do out in, in the country.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you for the gifts.
Yes.
The cups.
Got to have our, our mugs.
Got to have our mugs.
Wind up, so. All right, Madam Clerk.
We do not have any presentations this morning.
All right, so we're at the citizen comment portion. Citizen comments will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting of any non-agenda items, agenda items, future agenda items, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. So at this time, I only have one card for a Matthew Farmer. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I am Matthew S. Farmer, and I am the president of the Village of the Arts, AKA the Artist Guild of Manatee. I want to thank, first off, Kelly Thomas. She has been, to say, wonderful in helping us move our festival forward. I also want to extend my thanks to Rob, or not Rob Perry, sorry, Rob, Josh Kramer and Lisa Moore for helping us also in moving our festival forward. If you don't know, the Festival of the Arts, or the Festival of the Skeletons, in the Village of the Arts has been going on for, this is our nineteenth year. It is a celebration of those who have come and who have gone, and this year we are, we are privileged to sponsor Frida Cola, again, a great artist from the Southwest. We also are honored to know that Jeanette Isham will have a shrine within our village this year. Why do I say all that? I say that because we have what is very unique. We have this year twenty-five-plus art programs from the city of Bradenton and the schools surrounding that have done an art project. It's one of the things we do every year. Additionally, we have a number of other schools who will be presenting their music programs at this festival. So it's a festival of the city of Bradenton. It is not just a festival within the Village of the Arts. Additionally, we have SCF's Jazz Band coming to play. We have our first annual costume contest going on. Later that night, on Friday night at Bird Rock Taco, the Red Elvises will be playing. They have honored us for a number of years now. So we have a lot of things going on, but I think one of the things that we are most excited about, and I believe that the city should be most excited about, there's a company called Atlas Obscura, and they are an online company that features places like the Village of the Arts, and they are nationally known, and they will be in on Friday and Saturday videotaping the Festival of the Arts. So now, not only will the village, but the city of Bradenton will get national exposure for what is going on. Very excited about this. We have so many things going on, I can't even list them all. And again, I want to say this to you, Mr. Mayor, to our wonderful city councilman, myself, the board, and the Village of the Arts would like to invite you personally to come down, and I know many of you do, and experience our Festival of the Skeletons. But again, thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you very much, and, and last night, we, wife and I went through there watching the trick-or-treaters, which it was probably the most trick-or-treaters I've ever seen in that neighborhood, and then enjoyed a taco at Bird Rock, so, with Dave, so, very good, and things are going well. So, Ms. Moore?
Oh, I was going to actually note that I, I don't call it a shrine. I do not, this is not my particular cultural background, but I know a little bit about it, and I think that the word is ofrenda, so it is not, I just feel like that connotation is a little strange, so it's really, it really is, that, that, that cultural practice is a way to honor and preserve the memory of ancestors, so it really has a beautiful background. I think it's lovely that it's happening, so I just, I was going to point out that it's called ofrenda.
All right.
But I'm excited, it's lovely.
Yep, thank you very much, we look forward to, to visiting. All right, at this time, I have no more citizen comment, so we'll move on to consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Okay, we have Mrs. Moore to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mayor, before we get to that, I'd just like to put onto the record that I have the opportunity to take items A through I of, of, of number six, the consent agenda, and speak with each and every counselor on briefing. I was able to provide additional supplemental information, some great questions they had, and I think satisfactorily explained some of the issues surrounding the items contained within the consent agenda. I also reached out and spoke with, with Counselor Kramer as well, even though he isn't there, but I appreciate everybody taking their time to do that, and, and being thoughtful and asking great questions, and hopefully I was able to give them good information.
Good, thank you, Mr. Perry. All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll start the, oh, did you have something?
No, I just want to say I, I'm fine with everything, but I would like to see us have, have the people that are handling our celebrations on Old Main Street, like to get with them a little bit.
Yes.
And talk about stuff, so.
Yep, no, that's, we've already got a meeting scheduled, set up.
Okay, good.
Working with Kelly, she's working with him. All right, so we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
All right, carries unanimously, four to zero. Madam Clerk.
At this time, I'll administer the oath. Anyone wishing to address city council during the following public hearing will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, anyone that's going to speak in, in a public hearing, do they need to be sworn?
Only for this matter, only for seven A.
Seven A right now, so, okay, thank you.
Resolution two twenty-three eighty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bradenton granting special use permit number SU point-two-three-point-four-zero-six-two for a new restaurant with over twenty seats in the suburban commercial corridor zoning district for property located at seven-four-nine-three Manatee Avenue West, Bradenton, Florida, as more particularly described herein, making findings of facts and conclusions of law, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Good morning, this is Greg DeLong, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development for the city of Bradenton. Here is just a quick summary of the case. The applicant was Joshua Bryant with Lemonade MM Bradenton, Manatee LLC. The subject property is at seventy-four ninety-three Manatee Avenue West. There's the parcel ID, the acreage is about an acre in size, currently zoned suburban commercial corridor with a future land use of suburban commercial corridor. The existing use on the property is a vacant bank, and this is a special use to construct a new twenty-five-hundred square foot restaurant with seating exceeding twenty. Here is a location map, as you can see, it is on the southeast corner of Manatee Avenue West and Seventy-Fifth Street West. It is a former Sun Trust Bank location. Here is just an aerial photo of the building that's still there. That building will be removed, and a new building will be constructed. Here is the zoning map, as you can see, it is SCC, and then to the north, we have Manatee County, to the west, Manatee County, so this is kind of at the furthest outskirts to the west of the city. And here is also a future land use map, which is SCC, which is suburban commercial corridor. The proposed request as mentioned is a twenty-five-hundred square foot restaurant, seating is exceeding twenty, they're going to have eighteen indoor and twenty outdoor seats, it does require special use permit, as you can see in the chart provided below on this slide. As I mentioned, this is the former Sun Trust Bank, they are going to utilize existing ingress and egress locations on the property, and if there should be any roadway improvements need to be required, they will be authorized under the applicable governing bodies. This new use will have a drive-through, but drive-throughs are permitted, so it's kind of off the table on the discussion because we are only here for the seating, but I wanted to show you that it is a permitted use, that drive-throughs are permitted. This area is starting to see a little bit of a renaissance with development, we have the Wawa fueling which recently opened, to the south of the subject property will be a new medical center, emergency medical center, and then across the street, which we're all anticipating on opening, will be the new target, so, looking forward to that. Here is the proposed site plan, as you can see, the building will be a little bit more offset than the current building is, will be off to the east, and by the way, this will be a new Starbucks, just so you know, it is in the application materials. Here is, it's just an enlarged site plan, so you can see a little bit better layout of the property. As you can see, they are using existing curb cuts, here's the one connected to Wawa, and here is the one connecting to the property to the south where there is ingress and egress coming in off of Seventy-Fifth Street West. Here are some proposed elevations that were submitted at the planning commission, planning commission was, received these as handouts, we did put this in a PowerPoint for you to And here is just some current, our current condition photos that you'll, of the property right now, as you can see, it's a former Sun Trust Bank, as I mentioned, will be removed. I took this a little bit early in the morning, so I do have a little bit of sun glare on this one, but that is the existing curb cut to the Wawa that they will be utilizing. Here's just a little bit better view of it, so, none of this is going to change as for the site plan layout, it's just really a new building configuration on the property. Here's looking to the north where there's the Wells Fargo and Bank of America is located. I guess this should have been at one point called the financial corner or something, there's a lot of banks on one corner, but here is the current condition looking south, this is where the new medical emergency facility will be located, and the existing curb cut that they'll be utilizing there, and this is looking to the west towards the Palmetto-Sola Park and subdivision. There are standards that need to be met for special uses, they are listed under section three point, three point one of the land use regulations, and they're laid out here. They did meet all of those based on the submitted site plan that they have submitted to us, and here are some of the criteria that need to be met under three point, three point two point five of the land use regulations, and those were all met. So, they did go to planning commission, or I should back up a little bit, we did, as staff, recommend approval as submitted for this case back on October eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, planning commission also heard the case, and they recommended approval of case SU twenty-three dot four-zero-six-two as submitted, and they had a vote of six-zero. Any questions for me?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
It's your word, you go first.
Okay, on this, that, a couple of things with the ingress egress, and I couldn't tell from that picture, but at one point, you know, because of the vagrancy issue, they did, the, the hospital had done the chain link fence, and you were not able to access one of those ingress egress, that's the south entrance, and if you're going out that ingress, the one that is open, I don't believe you can turn south because of the way the median is, on Seventy-Fifth.
Right.
Okay, so anybody that's trying to leave and go south is going to go out Village Green and through the neighborhood, so I don't know if we don't need to kind of look, I, make, I, I don't know what the answer is, the vagrancy issue is, was definitely a problem, and the chain link needed to be there, but I'm just concerned about the ingress egress, maybe, I don't know what the timing is with the hospital, maybe that'll be opened up again, but.
It should be, we're, right now, they're finalizing their SIP for the hospital.
Because when you go out onto Manatee Ave, you can't turn left, so you can't use the turn signal, you can't go out that and turn left because of that, but, okay, so that, that was, that's one thing I'm very concerned about.
Sure.
I don't know what the answer is, or if you feel like the way it is is adequate?
It will, it'll definitely be reviewed through the SIP process, through Public Works. We'll make note of that, so they can take a double, another look at it to make sure. There were no comments during their pre-app on that, so, but we can make note of that.
And the other thing, and I don't know that this is necessarily for this applicant, but I've actually been trying to figure out who owns that shopping center, because the landscaping in there is old, dead, missing, and that shopping center is just a mess. We've complained about it quite a bit, and every little bit of remediation that's been done has really not been done very well.
We'll let code enforcement.
You know, but I, I just would like to see, you know, you go to some shopping centers and their, their landscaping, when something dies, they replace it, and I just want to figure out a way, this is such a gateway for people coming off the island, and I think it would go a long way to making us look a lot nicer if we could get that shopping center looking better.
We'll, we'll work with code enforcement on that and take a look to see if there's a, approved landscape plan as part of a PDP.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DeLong, on that question of timing, because obviously they're going to have to tear down a building and build a new one, so hopefully with Ms. Coker's concerns, that the hospital emergency department could be open before or about the same time as this building.
We're hoping.
Yeah, so I mean, it would alleviate that traffic concern, because that whole area would be reopened up and, and stop that, so. Ms. Barnaby?
Yes, Mr. DeLong, do you know how many cars they can stack and they're stacking there?
Our code requires nine, and they do meet that, so.
Well, here's what I know. I know that as you head north up past this intersection, you have a middle school, and you, further down on Seventy-Fifth Street, you have an elementary school. And I seem to remember when my niece was in middle school, going to Starbucks before she got to school was a really big thing. I'm concerned we're going to have cars stacking on Seventy-Fifth Street.
Correct.
So, again, I'm, I'm not opposed to having a Starbucks there, maybe they need to take a, a page out of Chick-fil-A's playbook and look at the possibility of some additional stacking, because you know the problem that we have at Manatee and three oh one. If you've never been in the shopping center where, when Dixie is, where the, the other Starbucks is during the morning, that will wrap all the way through the parking lot there. Again, I think it's something they need to consider and look at.
Definitely.
And we also have an issue at Twenty-Sixth Street and Manatee Avenue.
With Jeremiah's.
Every weekend, so, I mean, it's something that, you know, we know what we had to work through with Chick-fil-A and the, the additional lane. Now here, I don't think there's a possibility of additional lane, because they would stack more in the parking lot.
Right.
Than anything, so, that's a plus, but maybe not a.
Make sure they hire really fast baristas, one of the two.
I'm always for that.
All right, any other questions before we go to public hearing? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, the chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, do we have a, hold on, did they give us a recommendation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for approval of resolution twenty-three eighty-three is submitted.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carries four to zero, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item seven B is the second reading in public hearing for ordinance four-zero-one-seven, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending the Bradenton Form-Based Code to create Article One, Section one point twelve, building height incentives, to provide a limited height incentive in the T-five and T-six zoning districts, providing for codification, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, Ms. Singer.
Good morning, Robin Singer, Planning and Community Development Director. This is second reading on the ordinance to propose a height incentive within the Form-Based Code area, particularly in zones T-five and T-six, which are in more intensive zones within the Form-Based Code. We do propose, should I pause?
Yeah, pause.
Yes.
We like that they keep the cleanliness, but, timing is everything.
Bless their hearts.
Forgot it was Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday. Continue.
Okay, so we did propose one change in speaking with the city attorney since first reading, and that had to do with the description of the area. The area still consists of what we showed you in the staff report at the previous first reading when we had the discussion, and it's just that area that is west of First and east of Fifteenth, and then to include this little area and excluding the areas that are down here, and so these are, just applies to the T-five and T-six district. And so, these are, just applies to the T5 and T6 district. So, we revised the, the description to, to address that area a little more particularly. So, that's the only change, I believe, since first reading. Other than that, just to reiterate some of the points to this, it is to allow for greater height in the T5 district, similar to the T6 district. It is to allow for the bonus height incentive for affordable housing without necessarily putting in the affordable housing or the, having to pay into the Affordable Housing Fund. It allows for a discount of parking levels that are above the first floor. And, let me think, there was a few other things that are included within that. But, everything, in order to get approval on a project, they have to do so within the next five years. They have to break ground and commence construction within five years following that. So, in other words, they have a total of 10 years to break ground on projects. It all requires city council approval, and your approval is going to be subject to the criteria in the code that addresses other kinds of adjustments within the Form Base Code. So, the approval criteria will include granting the adjustment will not, will promote the same general level of land use compatibility as other applicable standards, granting the adjustment will not materially affect adjacent land uses and the physical character of uses in the immediate vicinity of the proposed development because the inadequate buffering, screening setback, or other land use considerations, and granting the adjustment will be generally consistent with the purpose and intent of the Form Base Code and the existing land use regulations where applicable. So, this isn't the end of it. They're not just coming in for an administrative approval. There is another approval process they're going to have to go through with set criteria that city council will consider as part of that process. And with that, staff is recommending approval, the Planning Commission recommended approval, and we hope to move forward on this with your blessing.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, seeing no questions, we're going to go to the public hearing. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Can we use that? Donna Mathias, 1600 First Avenue West, Unit 501, Bradenton, Florida. Good morning, thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. You know I love Bradenton as you do. We aren't, why aren't more people coming before you to speak? I have been told it does no good they don't listen. Since I've gotten to know many of you through these meetings, I find that hard to believe, yet actions speak louder than words. Why is that the perception? Look around. Buildings are being constructed with no on-site parking. Buildings are being built taller than originally slated. Citizens are being told that parking and traffic is not the council's fault. Affordable housing seems to be the buzzword of the day. Several buildings are being built under the guise of affordable housing in the downtown corridor. However, in that same note, are your constituents being told about the sunset that will take place for several of them? Where's the true affordable housing, where young people in the workforce can purchase homes, encouraging investment in our city? The majority of what I have seen publicized are rental units. There seems to be a perception that there is nothing available in this area. Why don't we have enough housing available in Bradenton for people moving here? Look at today's Zillow of what's available. Bradenton, Palmetto, Palmetto, Parish, and Lakewood Ranch. In the environmental attorney Richard Gross's paper, Regulating for Sustainability, the legality of carrying capacity based environmental and last you, land use permitting decisions, rhetoric such as "we can't put up a gate, we have to put them somewhere" is inadequate to describe the reality of the government's options in the face of population growth or the importance of exercising those options. There is no basic constitutional or human right for all who might want to live in Florida to have their home in a paradise subsidized by the government or the ecosystem. Now, you are looking at approving Ordinance 4017, which will give our council an à la carte option to change zoning that is currently in place. You say you don't want to be like Sarasota, but everything you are doing points to the fact that you're trying to do everything in your power to be like Sarasota. Bradenton will no longer be Bradenton with its own personality and charm. This ordinance will impact the downtown Central Library property. If you haven't looked lately, there is a petition to save the downtown Central Library with over 13,400 signatures on it. I think this is a statement in itself, if you are really listening to the people. I would like to ask that you exclude, exclude the downtown Central Library property from this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're still under the public hearing, citizen comment. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. Mrs. Singer, did you have anything else?
Uh, nothing further.
Okay. Chair will entertain comments, a motion?
Um, hold on. I can't get in this thing. I just, I mean, I'm the one to make a motion, I just seem to find that. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 4017.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Coker? Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 4017. Ms. Barnaby?
Um, you know, we have been talking about trying to have a more viable downtown, if I'm remembering correctly, and again, I'm sounding like Jeanette Gallo down here. I remember discussions when I was in high school in 1975, when we tore down the Dixie Grand Hotel. And, again, being born here and growing up here, I can remember the vibrant downtown. We had so many people in downtown that our crosswalks went kitty-corner, so people didn't have to go this way. They would, all the traffic would stop, and people would be able to cross diagonally. And then, a lot of changes happened, and I would say that I don't think a lot of them were for the best. And we keep talking about, we want to have a more vibrant downtown. Why do you want to have a more vibrant downtown? Because if your downtown is more valuable than the individual tax bills usually are less on homeowners, if your downtown is vibrant and valuable. The other concern we have, and we just had the representatives from the Manatee County Agricultural Community come in and talk about how we need to make sure that we save farmland. And I've brought this up before. Our choices are either to look at having higher, taller buildings in downtown, or we have urban sprawl from the beaches to the DeSoto County line. And it's all rooftop. So, where's the balance in that? Where's the choice in that? If you have 1,000 people a day moving to Florida, which we are, and if Florida is a property rights state, which it is, many times when things come before the council, if it fits in the comprehensive plan, there is no way legally to turn it down. And I don't think the vast majority of our citizens understand that point at all. They don't pay attention until it's in their backyard. And by that point, it's, it's probably too late. We sat here and had comprehensive plan meetings in the 80s and 90s that nobody showed up So, now, we're looking at trying to reinvigorate a downtown that the citizens have already made the investment in as far as roads, sewer lines, water lines, sidewalks. And we've talked about trying to have a livable, walkable, workable downtown, and to be able to get some of the things that we need, such as a grocery store and other amenities, we're going to have to have more people living down here. It's been proven. Publix looks at how many heads are in beds before they come in and put in an urban grocery So, because I don't want rooftops and urban sprawl from here to the DeSoto County line, I'm going to support this.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coker.
Yeah. First off, I would really like to thank Ms. Mathias. You have been nothing but kind and professional, and while I don't necessarily agree with everything with you, I want to thank you for being a voice for, because we know that the people are out there, but, but you've done it in the right way. So, I just want to thank you for that, seriously. And, and I understand, and to a certain extent, I, I agree with the resistance to change. We ought, nobody likes it, but as Councilwoman Barnaby brings up, the thousand people coming to Florida right now, the secret's out, and that's going to bring change. And in my education, I, I have a degree in planning, and, you know, the change will happen, but we want to make sure that we plan for that, change, growth. It's all part of planning. And, and I feel like it's incumbent upon us to make sure that, that the way we do it, it's based on sound planning principles. And it is very sound to put your density in your downtown core. It, it prevent, it helps to stem the urban sprawl, and with all the benefits that Ms. Barnaby talked about, I feel like we have to do it for the sake of our families, but also for our kids' financial future, as far as being able to lower our tax, tax liabilities, because it's more people helping to pay for the, for the pie. The cost of running government, the cost of having streets and everything, it's, it's not going, it's going to keep going up, and we see how expensive it's getting. And so, the more people that are helping to, to carry that burden, the, the easier it'll be. And, and with regard to the library, I, I think a lot of those people just want to be, want to be made assured that there will always be a downtown library. And I, I myself am committed to that, and I think my co, my colleagues are as well, so... But, of course, I, I am in favor of this. I think it's the right way to handle the change, the gov, the, the growth that we're handling, and so, I, I am supporting it.
Mrs. Moore?
My position really hasn't changed, even though I do appreciate everyone who has reached out and, and talked about it with me and talked it through. I, I agree with Ms. Barnaby and Ms. Coker's points that the city is finite boundaries, and to deal with growth, I agree that density is going to be important. I 100% agree that I would love to see more, I would love to stimulate development, redevelopment in the downtown area. So, I, so I support aspects of this completely, because I think that, you know, to your points, growth, planning, that is important. Where I, the thing that I can't really wrap my head around is, of course, the elimination of the workforce housing. I just note, again, that it is workforce, and to the extent that I want these projects to succeed, I think you all know that it has been my position that some diversity in that, with some workforce mixed with the market, will, I have a suspicion, I have a feeling, that, that will enable those projects to succeed. And it will have, it will help the downtown flourish to have that diversity of income level, because I have concerns about only market rate becoming vacant seasonally. And I don't know that that really supports what we're trying to do in the downtown. To the extent that, that it's difficult for developers to do the redevelopment that we're asking them to do, I understand that there's weird shaped lots in the downtown. This area is very tight. We have tools in our, you know, we have resources, particularly with the CRA, to help with offset the, the, you know, the problems with getting financing and, you know, ultimately, I don't expect all developers to do what they do without, you know, being able to earn an income. So, I would like to see us keep that in, because I want to change the mindset to encourage people to think, how can I make this happen? How can I, you know, use those couple of floors in maybe a little bit more of a creative way than a traditional developer mindset of just like market rate or workforce or affordable? And then, just, again, my feeling that as, as planning goes, there are some aspects of planning that are intangible. We, I can't put a monetary value on them. They include a library. I 100% agree with you that I'm committed to having a library downtown. But I think it also includes that, that element of having workforce mixed in the project with. I think that's an intangible thing that we can't put our finger on, but it, I just really strongly believe that that will actually help the project succeed in a surprising, a pleasantly surprising way, if we just give it a chance. So, I would encourage us to remove that element from the ordinance. I'm, I'm okay with incentivizing with the garage levels and, and increasing the density, but it's the workforce housing part that I would object to. So, I would encourage us to remove that and use the tools that we have at our disposal through the CRA to help offset, so that we can try to motivate people to think a little differently.
And then, Ms. Coachman, if you'll indulge me for a moment, just to, to kind of go towards some of that, because, you know, I don't disagree with probably 99.9% of all the comments that have been said here today, but there's an opportunity that if, if we really look at it, and some of our growth has been stunted by those regulations that are in there. And, and I've done extensive research with surrounding areas and saw why. And, and I definitely don't want to be like those rivals that we have in, in all of the high school sports and, you know, all the things we've done over the years with our surrounding, and I, I want to be the best Bradenton we can be. And, and change is inevitable in, if you want to grow. And, and sometimes it grows without us, sometimes it grows with us. But, one of the things that, that is an opportunity to do still, and, and we've seen, the projects aren't jumping out at us with the workforce housing unless we, and I say "we" as a government, CRA, planning, are giving very high contributions. You know, there's not one project out there right now that's being built in the city that didn't come with a substantial CRA contribution, with a substantial city contribution, and thank goodness, we have a great relationship with the county, because we would still not be having two projects going on Ninth and Sixth and farther down, that one is an affordable housing, one is a senior housing, without the county stepping up for over $2 million, which had never happened in the city before, where the county gave money through their, their TIF and their ARPA. So, we were very fortunate, because both of those projects were dead in the water without a million-plus dollars each. So, there is ways, and, and I do not sit on the CRA board, and I probably will not sit on the CRA board after finding out additional information with some things that we'll do, but the CRA can still have a policy to incentivize that, but when you put it in your planning, it de-incentivizes the developers because they can't make the numbers work. And if they could have made the numbers work before, we'd already see some of it, because, you know, it's just there. So, I believe that when the CRA board meets, and I believe with the new director, that, you know, you will be able to figure ways to incentivize. And I think some of these projects will say, hey, we've got some areas that we can incentivize in there, but what, and a previous council member said, that, you know, our values are low. Well, our values are low because of our restrictions. So, you know, if, if we do this, and again, one of the things to me that's important is helping citizens outside of the urban core, and in some, especially in some of our depressed areas that have been maybe neglected, not purposely, but just over time, this gives an opportunity for the city and the urban core to have that development that we want, that... for the city and the urban core to have that development that we want, that, last night I was sitting down at O'Bricks after going out and visiting with all the Halloweeners at the police and talking to a gentleman next to us, you're visiting here, what? No, he goes, I'm staying here. He was the Yukon girls tennis coach, staying downtown. And he goes, I love, you know, he's obviously recruiting somebody, and he had to walk down to O'Bricks, and he goes, this is great. He goes, it's just so small, you know, because he's used to traveling around. So that's what excites me, is given that opportunity to have five or six O'Bricks, because there's a need for it. So I think that will help other areas, and I think we will still, or the CRA will still have an opportunity to still give those incentives, where then it drives the value up for the citizens that aren't just in downtown. Ms. Coachman?
Trying to remember all of what I was going to say. So much has been discussed and very, very good points. I agree with you 99.9% of everything that's been said. I agree with. Change is hard, and thank you for speaking for the public. As hard as it is for you to agree with something like this, it's just how hard it is for us to make the decision, because we understand. Bradenton is landlocked. And if all these people, thousands of people, a given day, are moving to Florida, a lot of them are coming here, because it is a great place to be, and we have to do something. And as the mayor was saying, doing this and making a vibrant downtown is not only going to be beneficial for downtown, but also the outskirts of it. Change is difficult. I agree with you, it's important to have some diversity in the cost, you know, workable, workforce, affordable, and of course, those definitions can be quite ambiguous or something. You know, we need to really hone down on those. But it is risky, but I have faith that the CRA does have some tools to assist if we need. It is risky, it's scary, I know, to let go of that. But I just, I just want to say, growth is hard, but we've got to do something.
Thank you. And then one thing that I, in all the reading and going through different things, and looking at some cities of our size, there was a quote out there, a book I was looking at, that said, 85% of people, you know, of a certain age group find change is hard, but 91% of them want something else to do in their downtown. So they say it's hard for change, but they still want more to do. So, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, is difficult, and if we do the same old thing, we get the same old results. So unfortunately, you know, sometimes those things are what it is in talking. So we've talked, we've had discussion, and I think we're just ready, going to call for the vote. We'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three, or excuse me, four.
No.
Five?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries three to one. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is Ordinance 4018, An Ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, Amending Chapter Two, Section 2.2.4.1, Types of Special Uses of the Land Use Regulations of the City of Bradenton. To clarify the approval requirements for the expansion of special uses, amending Article Four, Table 4.7, Specific Function and Use of the Bradenton Form Base Code, to add use categories including secondhand store and pawn shop, and changing the status of medical clinics in certain districts. An amending Article 12 of the Form Base Code, Definition of Terms, to define pawn, pawnbroker, secondhand store, and pawn shop, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for retroactive application, and providing an effective date.
Ms. Singer?
Hey, Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director. As the title states, part of what we're doing is defining secondhand stores and pawn shops. Pawn shops would then be prohibited, but secondhand stores will allow for antique stores, thrift shops, consignment stores, and the like. Medical clinics are being switched from a permitted use to a special use that'll allow a greater level of scrutiny on certain medical clinics, and whether or not they are appropriate for the community. We're also changing the land use regulations regarding special uses. Under the Form Base Code, when a use is not listed, it can be put through a special use criteria. However, under special use permits, it currently allows for the expansion, not exceeding 20%, to go through an administrative approval. So what we're suggesting is that we add language that if it is a use that is not listed, either in the land use regulations use chart or the Form Base Code use chart, that any kind of expansion would have to go through a public hearing process, come back through, even just the expansion of one that already exists, may have existed for years, but if it's a use that's not listed, then it should come back through a public hearing process for any kind of expansion. And with that, staff is recommending approval, and the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Any questions of Ms. Singer before we go to the public hearing? Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Just, I know we talked about this, the arcades, they're already precluded somewhere else, or?
Correct. I mean, it's gambling, we don't allow for it in the city.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. This time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Okay. Looks like it's going to be my date. Which one is it?
Forty eighteen.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Resolution 4018.
No, it's ordinance.
Ordinance 4018, sorry, I can't find it.
I'll second it.
All right, second. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carries four to zero. Madam Clerk?
Item 7D is the first reading of Ordinance 4023, An Ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, Amending Chapter 70, Article 3, Section 7092 of the City's Code of Ordinances, to add new sections 7092D, 7092E, 7092F, 7092G, and 7092H, requiring building sewers or laterals to be maintained by the property owner in good working order, requiring building sewer inspections upon certain occurrences, providing inspection requirements, requiring the property owner to replace or rehabilitate defective building sewers, providing for enforcement of mechanisms, providing for codification, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance 4023 is going to be on December 13th.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could just be briefly heard on this, I had the opportunity to speak with some of the counselors as to explaining this first reading and what a private lateral ordinance does, basically, and why it's required. The genesis of this particular legislation is through the Water Keepers lawsuit, and a private lateral is basically a sewer line that goes from someone's building structure to our collection system. Mr. Rudacell, I believe, has reviewed the ordinance itself for legal sufficiency, and would be the source to talk to about that. But it's really a policy matter that is required by, to eliminate breaches and specifically inflow and infiltration into our water collection system, our sanitary sewer collection system. And it's similar to things that are required sometimes by, you know, obviously federal law, backflow preventers, because of incidents that happen with different types of contaminants that get into potable water. Well, this is sewer water, basically, and what we're trying to prevent is that inflow and infiltration into our sanitary collection system. As part of the consent decree, it was required that we do this. It's common to federal, even stormwater permits have requirements that private landowners have to, the local government has to regulate to require private landowners to put in different types of utility that meet today's modern needs and eliminate environmental concerns. Private laterals that deal with stormwater for potentially illicit discharge is what, you know, if you have a private business, the local government may have to regulate. In a former job, we had to pass an ordinance of that form. This is a little bit different, but it's kind of required by federal law. It's not required by federal law, but it helps us comply with federal law immensely. It's actually required by the consent decree.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Perry?
I'll just have a quick one. So I know we did talk about this one quite a bit, and I have no objection to it, but when you say private versus public, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. So this is really just private, privately owned laterals?
Right. This is the portion of the sewer line that runs from the, usually the house or the business or whatever it is, to the public system. So it requires the property owner to maintain that, and if it's defective, then it requires them to repair it.
What would have happened previously? Just, it wouldn't have been repaired, and it would have just been a mess? Okay.
That's right. And in those cases, what it would do, and you have to be thoughtful of what the private infrastructure from buildings and homes and things like that, looks like, a lot of times, they are built to yesterday's standards, they're covered by patios and a host of other types of things, and they're basically polluting, the surface water is polluting our collection system, which is supposed to be a closed-loop sanitary sewer system. But when it rains, it might go onto that patio, there's a crack in the pipe, a penetration of the private landowner, they've got to repair that. It's got to be inspected. The things, that's what's required by this ordinance.
So we could fix everything in our city and be a complete closed loop, but all of the homes then are putting in that much more volume that we can't control at the plant, because those systems aren't working properly, that we fix the public part of it, but the private part. And I don't think it's going to be a huge thing, but people just have to maintain, you fixed it under your house, so you got to fix it from your house to the sewer line on your property.
Right.
That would be a very simple analysis of it. Ms. Coker?
Yeah, you say that they have to be inspected. Is the city going to be doing the inspection? Is the homeowner? And, I mean, are you going to have to dig down into them? I mean, how is this all going to be done?
Well, we did a, we did a smoke test in the neighborhood in East Bradenton a while back, and I think it, if I'm not remembering correctly, it came out pretty good, didn't it? I mean, there was some good results.
Yeah, I mean, to answer your question, it requires the property owner to have a licensed plumbing contractor do the inspection work.
Annually?
No, no, no. It's triggered when they come in for permits for essentially modifications that affect their...
Plumbing.
Plumbing, right. It's pretty much handled the same way it is for backflow preventers, required by federal law. If you put a permit in to do plumbing modifications that require a permit, as part of that, the plumber has to certify that he's inspected, basically, your potable water system to ensure there's a backflow preventer. And, not your potable, your sanitary sewer, actually, I think. And in that regards, it's required. So you could plan on redoing your pipes inside the house. I went out to Harbor, not Harbor, River Isle, and I was dealing with a citizen out there, and we were talking a little bit, and she said, you know, I was expecting a bill for about $4,000 to replace the piping, but then, when the plumber did the inspection that was required for the backflow preventer, he said it's not up to code, and it has to be, and that was an additional $2,000. Now, is that a burden? Undoubtedly, it is, but as a landowner, you do have to have infrastructure that doesn't pollute and contribute to problems the city has in their closed-loop system, their conveyance system. And so it is the nature of owning land, keeping it up to snuff, both exterior code enforcement, you talked about the landscaping, and that landowner probably should improve that lot, that we talked about that parking lot, cost to that, that's exterior, that's aesthetics. This is underground, and plumbing systems into it, that actually touch and reach into and utilize the city's sanitary sewer collection and conveyance system.
Yes, ma'am.
I think my concern is that with those backflow preventers, if some people, you have to get them inspected every so many years, or they're supposed to be, and it's kind of a, anyhow, any.
Every year.
It's every year.
Okay.
That's only for commercial property.
Only for commercial, yeah. Not for residential.
Inspections of backflow preventers, the big, the big pipes you see coming out of apartment complexes, things like that, that's typically what a backflow preventer is.
If you have a small backflow preventer in your home...
Right.
It has to be inspected every year.
Yeah.
Every year. I just did three of them for my dad, you know, because we get a letter from the county every year. Now, does the city do it differently? No, it's every year. The county, you know, every year you get a letter, and you have to inspect a little in your front yard. We're going to find it.
So every resident that has a single-family dwelling, doesn't have a master backflow preventer, has to call a plumber every year, and they have to do it.
No, if you have a backflow, if you haven't changed anything, you don't have a backflow.
Right, so you do it one time.
No.
No. Every year, every year, your backflow has to be certified.
But it's a very streamlined situation. I mean, they send you that notice, and it includes, I think, you know, a website, and you don't even see the people. You just go to the website and say, here's my address, inspect my backflow thing.
Pay 30 bucks, and you get it.
Yeah, and it's like 30 bucks.
I didn't know.
And you have a sticker on it, tag on it, and...
My understanding was once it was certified as meeting requirements, it wasn't until you would do additional work, meaning...
Well, I think there's not consistency, because I've had backflow preventers in residences, and I've never, but at businesses, you had to have them. So I'm not sure, I have one now, and I've never gotten a notice, and I don't even know if there's a tag on it. Now I'm getting...
Let me research that. Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I dealt with 125 of them in Highland Lakes when I was president of the HOA, and we had to get them inspected every year, and we made a deal with the plumbing company.
Right. And that was an HOA?
No, 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 this was a residency, but it was our HOA.
Single-family dwellings.
Single-family dwellings, yeah. So, no, it's, Dean can talk to that a little bit. We're kind of getting off the path here, but...
Good morning. I've been cleared up. Dean Jones, Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities. Living in the county, every year, at least in the county, you have to have your backflow, residential backflow inspected every year. You have a tag, there's certain plumbing businesses that come out and do it that are certified, some don't do it, just because the cost is only 25 to 30 bucks, so it's not really worth their time. But to confirm what Mayor Brown has said, that yes, once a year, you have to have it inspected, they come out, they click it with a little clicker, they put a tag on it, and then you wait for a year, you either get a letter, and then when you call them, most of the time, they have your card on file, they'll just say, yes, Mr. Jones, we'll come out, we'll take care of it, and within three or four days, they come out. If you don't, you start getting letters from the county that there's going to be fines implemented. I have a backflow, because I have a pool. People who don't have a pool, people who don't have a well on property or any type of irrigation, don't require a backflow, but if you have any of those three categories, you will need a backflow, and it is inspected once a year.
And what are those three categories, again?
A pool, irrigation, or a well.
And if you don't, you don't need to have it inspected?
That's absolutely right. Yeah, we just had a case. Yeah, you won't have one. We just had a case where Letitia Smith, one of my section managers, went out to an elderly lady's house where she didn't have any of those three, they still tried to charge her $8,000 for a backflow to put one in. They ended up doing irrigation pipe from the backflow to the house, and Letitia discovered this, she spoke with the elderly lady, of course, she is on fixed income, we got with the plumbing business, and they actually rebated her, or gave her back her money, took out the backflow and made everything right. So you just have to be careful, but to reiterate, it has to be done once a year.
If you have one of those three categories.
Yes, sir. And, well, if you have a backflow. And those requirements are those three categories. All right, thank you.
Thank you for clarification.
All right, so we'll move this to the December 13th meeting to have the second reading and public hearing. Mr. Perry, under New Business?
Thank you, Mayor. Under Item 8A, which is the City Administration Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Bradenton, Florida Police Benevolent Association Lieutenants, this specifically is a collective bargaining agreement related to the six lieutenants that currently serve in the Bradenton Police Department. It is a separate and distinct bargaining unit, although under the same representative being PBA. But it's just for the lieutenants, not for rank and file, not to sergeants. As you all know, we were able to strike a three-year, kind of...
As you all know, we were able to strike a three-year, kind of monumental agreement that really raised our salaries and brought us into a more competitive position with surrounding areas and national areas as it relates to our ability to recruit and retain. The results of that particular proposal for rank and file and sergeants was overwhelmingly ratified, I think it was 79 to 9 or something, by the membership itself. But this being separate and distinct, it really created a problem with what we call in the HR world, compaction and compression, because we had higher-level sergeants that were being paid more than lieutenants. And so we had to basically review lieutenant's contract, and we were under a previous contract with lieutenants that we struck last year, and it was a multi-year deal. And this was an out year. Last year was the first year of that agreement. And that's really what caused the compaction, the compression, is that it was designated as, I believe, a 4% raise this year for the lieutenants, but in some cases, rank and file and sergeants included, were getting significantly more, sometimes 15% or, you know, in that general area and the like. To that extent, we were asked to revisit this, and as a matter of good policy and management, both at the department level as well as the city level, to ensure that we have good HR separation within our various classifications and pay bands and the like, we were able to go to the lieutenants and put together a proposal that was ratified, I believe, 6-0. That's what's before us and required to ask for a motion, basically, that approves the bargaining agreement between the City of Bradenton and the lieutenants, as represented by the PBA.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bradenton and the Police Benevolent Association representing the lieutenants with BPD.
There a second?
Sure. I'll second.
All right, any other discussion or questions of Mr. Perry? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Carries four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
We're here before you on administrative item number 8B. With me is John Byers, the current manager for our city golf program. Dennis Bush had been with us for some time, and Mr. Byers had come in, what is it, about probably nine months ago, or?
Yeah, I was the head golfer and became the chairman after about 30 days ago.
Yep, yep. And it was good because Mr. Byers was able to kind of work under Dennis' tutelage and get some historical understanding of the course's operation and variety of different golf management issues. While Mr. Byers is there, it's always good to be able to double fill and learn from your predecessor. And as you know, River runs a valuable asset to the city. The purpose of what I requested was a baseline study, and we put this out and got NGF Consulting, who does a lot of golf coursework, particularly in the southeastern United States, as well as here in the Tampa Bay area, for golf studies. What we were trying to do was find out a few things. And the basics of that was, we have this asset, and for years, it had been losing money, basically, pre-COVID. And then COVID hit, and golf picked up a lot. So the rounds out there picked up, the revenue picked up, and the like. And they've been able to move forward. There is a deficit in the fund, but they have been able to basically move towards repayment of the deficit. It's an enterprise golf, just like the water utility and stormwater is, and the like. So we want to take a look at the financials, and we looked at them from the inside, we looked at them from the outside as well. We wanted to look at what the condition of the course was, who plays the course, the numbers of rounds and capacity, should we make future investments into things like advertising and marketing to increase membership and play at the course? Should we make capital investments in banquet facilities that could add revenue opportunities and cash centers for the city to ultimately improve the financial condition at the course? What about the long-term capital needs for course condition and amenities out there? We looked at things like driving ranges, whether it made sense to potentially try to put a driving range in an adjacent, potentially adjacent property. We looked at, again, banquet facilities, a host of things. The good news with this report, and there was a lot of good news in it, is that the staff out there is doing a great job as it relates to keeping up the course. It will need capital improvements at some point in the next several years in order to maintain the condition of the course. Its playership and rounds are really good. They've increased to really, it wouldn't even make sense to make additional investment into advertising or marketing to try to increase them, because during most peak golf hours and times of the year seasonably, they're at maximum capacity anyway. And one of the things that came out of the report was that our price points are a little bit low. It is a community golf facility, but it's interesting, Mayor had sent me a news article about some of the courses in Sarasota, I think it was a county course.
City course.
See, it was a city course, yeah. And their rounds are just, I mean, their price points, as far as tee times, are in the hundreds, you know, I think it was $122, $132, something along those lines. And ours is substantially, substantially lower than that. And so the consultants thought there was room to maintain the profile, the same type of golfer who wants to save a little bit of money, but get out to a nice course and enjoy the outdoors and the like. And so there might be some opportunity to increase price points and try to recover a little bit more cash. But there was nothing particularly damning about the report or otherwise large-scale opportunities. And so I think we're going to revisit golf, as we probably do every couple of five years in any community, because golf's a tough business to be in, municipal golf in particular. We'd run four courses in my prior position, and it was a lot of the same issues out there and everything. But I think by and large, of course, it's got a good, clean bill of health. And I just wanted to let you know that I think it was worth hiring the consultants. I think the cost of that study was about $24,000. And in order to find a benchmark, particularly for Mr. Byers coming in as a new director of golf, you know, it's good to understand what you have, where your starting point is. That's the deal. And we'd love to have you come out to the course. You will have to pay, but we have discount rates for employees.
Nope, we don't.
I'm sure Mr. Perry will take care of it.
Any questions?
I know Mr. Perry and I rode out there and with some consultants and went out, looked at the course, and obviously, there is some safety issues, I believe, on the cart paths and different things that need to be addressed, you know, right away, if not anything, but...
Some of them have been already. I probably was remiss because Public Works actually has improved some of the bridges.
Yeah, okay, good, because that's important. With my history of being on the Boys and Girls Club Board and getting a golf course 20-some years ago, hand it, when I was president of that board, and learning about all of that and what happens on the different type of courses, seeing what's happened to Bobby Jones in Sarasota when it closed, now they're bringing it back at a, you know, and they're going to, you know, $120, $121 a round, and they think that they'll be busy. So, and again, like I said, I don't want to compare us to that, but we also have to be mindful of what happens with the capital improvements, because if you don't improve, then it goes the other way. I think we're going to have to look at, you know, opportunity to where the proper price point is. Ironwood Pine Brook Course has just recently sold to an individual that's putting a lot of money into that, and, you know, and then also, I think over the years, we're going to have to say, okay, if we want to stay in the golf course business, then do we adjust the ways how old golf courses are? Because that's one of the things you need to look at, and I've seen around, sometimes the old-time golfer playing four and a half hours, four to four and a half hours, doesn't want to do it anymore, but wants to get out and play in that three to three and a half hours. So is there a way to adjust the course to give it an opportunity to even be more successful with the way, if we're going to put capital into it, do you adjust it a little bit and make some of those rounds a little quicker? People just don't want to spend the four and a half hours anymore. And then also, what's our tournament, you know, status if we've got a course that people can do? You know, I think there's, you know, I know a lot of times, there's courses that are closed that, you know, but we don't have a banquet facility, so they can go into. So I think all of those things have to come up with the plan, and then really see, you know, yeah, we're making money right now, and I hope it doesn't turn, because I think golf may stay a little bit, but I don't know that those younger golfers want to go and spend four hours. They want to go and spend two hours. So how do we make that adjustment?
Right, right.
And just not stick our head in the sand and say, same old thing, same old thing?
Yeah, we actually, you and I had this discussion when we were out there, and I thought it was a really interesting discussion to have, and we asked the consultant to look at the possibility of course addition or modification for some of the more novel golf programs that are out there. I think there's two or three different models that have different types of course configuration that aren't top golf. It's not electronic golf, but it's a shorter game and a faster game, and a game that focuses more on going out there with a group of your friends, maybe four or eight people, and having some, you know, beverages, and being able to get out of there in a couple hours. And we looked at some options like that, which we want to continue to explore, but the consultant didn't think that they were particularly viable in that area as it relates to be able to track that type of demographic. That's the only thing I can tell you, the takeaway that I got from his analysis of that particular point. But he also was fairly open to, there still may be possibilities, and I think we owe it to ourselves and Mr. Byers, owes it to us to look at those possibilities.
I think when it comes to the time of spending millions of dollars.
Right.
To revamp the course, we need to look at all options.
Absolutely.
Because we're still, if not hundreds of thousands, a million dollars in the hole until we start to have five or six more years of what we've had the last couple of years.
Sure, and if I can just address the two questions. As far as pace of play goes, we've actually started to have a starter to make sure that our rounds, we're trying to keep them four hours or less. Before, we didn't actually have a starter to actually help initiate when people were actually teeing off and things along those lines. And we have found that by having just a starter alone has really helped increase the pace of play. What I'm also looking at trying to also have put in place is a ranger. Sometimes people get bogged down on the golf course, and so we need to have a ranger out there to actually kind of push them along and those types of things. Secondly, I did review the numbers, and I did it year over year, so we had, actually had some price increases. Again, trying to get us more in line to where we actually should be. We're definitely still in the lower end, for sure, as far as what our prices are. But just to let you know, so our average per round day, or per round count per day was actually 10 more than we had last year at this time, so it was around 155. We were actually averaging 165. And our round per, what they actually paid, went up by $7. So just that alone, I can see that people are embracing the golf course. The golf course is actually in really good shape. The maintenance crew has done an exceptionally good job. We're trying to maintain within our budget to make sure that we continue that, and we stay very proactive with that. But slowly but surely, we're going to continue to make steps to improve, because there's always room for improvement, for sure. So I just wanted to address those two items.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Moore?
Yeah, I do, I didn't know, did you have your pink card?
Ms. Moore?
I don't have a pink.
Are we getting to a point where it's self-sustainable, and also then maybe are we saving? Like, the price tag for the, for the capital improvement seems...
Yeah, so I'd have to look at those numbers more closely. So I've only been able to, I've only been there for 30 days, so I haven't had a lot of privy to some of that information and things. I don't even really know how that debt, we'll call it, how it actually is being taken off, because what I see is numbers that show us more profitable, and then that debt actually is not going down as much. I don't really understand how that works exactly, so I just need to find out some more information on that. So, but yes, sustainability, as far as I know, I mean, we were definitely well in the black last year, for sure, or last fiscal year.
I'd like to see us building so that when it comes time for those capital improvements, it is coming from the golf course.
Yeah, one of the biggest things in my experience with golf courses is the thing that kills golf courses is debt. And so that would be the biggest thing, is I want to make sure we have the least amount of debt as possible, if any.
Mr. Perry, can you give us a quick synopsis of an enterprise zone?
The enterprise is basically to be self-sufficient. It's supposed to pay for itself. It's also supposed to be able to set a capital reserve to pay for future capital expenditures, and ultimately, you know, have a fairly, a rate that's set competitive where it doesn't make money. It's supposed to be revenue basically neutral, and that's the short version of government enterprise.
So do we have a capital reserve for the golf course?
No, actually, the golf course is in, is in about a $500,000, $400,000 deficit. Little bit over $500,000, right. But it has been for years. It's not anything, and there has been repayment of some of that debt over the years. $300,000.
So we were at $800,000 plus before COVID.
But it carries over every year, so that...
Carries over. So now, with COVID hitting and the golf course scenarios changing, we're starting to make some money.
Yep.
And we've paid off about $300-plus thousand of that debt, but still have $500,000. This is what Mrs. Moore is asking.
Right, yeah, yeah, she is.
And this is the synopsis of, I've never been against golf. You know, I'm starting to play it again, and I'm getting that bug back since my shoulder surgery, but we also got to look at the good stewards of the money. If we're going to, if we're going to go borrow $2 to $3 million at a minimum, probably, to fix the course up, that then we're already, you know, we've got to figure out the half-a-million-dollar debt first, and we could not raise the prices enough to offset that, because then nobody would play. So I think that's why I thought this analysis was very important, to say how we go forward, because it is the, you know, I do believe in trying to, you know, have the golf course, but at what cost? We had an auditorium that we ended up shuttering, because at the cost of it and the debt, there was no way ever to get out of it, and it needed capital improvements. So, you know, if we're not being good stewards, then shame on us. Ms. Barnaby?
Yes, I just wanted to say that recently, my son and I came out there to play, and we had a wonderful experience. It was really nice to see a good mixture of young, old, black, white. It was, it was just our entire community out there, and that was exciting to see. And we had, we had a wonderful time, and your staff was, was very nice, very helpful, and I just wanted to share that with you.
I don't have a pink card anymore. I actually am not a golfer, but I kind of look at this like a public park. And so I hate to see us raise those fees too high, because then it will start excluding people from being able to play. If we are, and I, but I appreciate we have to be, you know, fiduciarily responsible. I would like to see if you're going to raise the fees, that you maybe do it for people that are not city residents, because they're taxpayers, and I would like to keep that affordable so that the students and, you know, everyone can afford to go there, but we've, of course, got to make it desirable to be there. And I think it'd be interesting to know how many of the people that go and golf there are actually taxpayers to the City of Bradenton. And so I'm fine with, you know, maybe inviting them to come and enjoy it, but they're going to have to help pay for it. So that's just a thought I have about it. I want to keep it nice, keep it going, and keep it for everybody. It's kind of the way I feel about the horses, you know? I want everybody to have an opportunity to be able to do their thing and not make it cost prohibitive, so.
Can, Mr. Perry, can ad valorem tax pay its enterprise zone funding?
No.
So when it's a public park, we can put some money towards it. For an enterprise zone, you have to really make sure that we're doing it right. And I don't disagree with you, that was a conversation Mr. Perry and I had about, do the city residents, is there a way to come up with, you know, a, if you're a city resident, check here when you're checking in and you get a free golf...
Yeah, you basically produce a driver's license.
1,000 people play that are non-city residents, and five people play that are city residents, so we're supplementing the county.
Right.
You know, and so that, that was asked. I don't know if that ever happened, but...
No, it can be done. You get a separate pay code, and I don't think there's anything illegal, although we'd have to probably run it through, you know, legal and have Scott take a deep dive on it. But it's pretty common in municipal governments, if you run museums or aquariums or anything
If you run museums or aquariums or anything else, you get a local government discount, so to speak, by being a resident. And the concept is you're paying city taxes in addition to it, so...
I agree with that. I think there's ways...
It's price discrimination, but it's discrimination in a good way, you know, yeah.
No, very good. So I think it's a good conversation. I'm glad we did it. I think it was worth it and I'm hoping now pressure's on. 30 days in. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Perry, or is this going to Mr. Burton?
Mr. Burton's going to take the helm on this and he's on the con. Con, command.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council Jeff Burton, CRA Director. Before you, you have three plans. We're not asking, when we do come back after we advertise with, or advertise, we send letters out to the taxing authorities and we'll come back for a first and second reading, but we're asking you today to vote recommendation to move forward with that on the revenue survey plans. You have them before you. This is just a recommendation to move forward. Staff is already preparing the letters. They'll be sent out certified and follow state statute.
All right, any questions or motion to move forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Perry.
Motion to approve the draft plans for the central downtown and Tammy Ami Trail redevelopment areas and instruct staff to continue the statutorily amendment process.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Ms. Coachman first. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Perry, is this part of it you're going to go over?
Mayor, the next order of business is approval of the guaranteed maximum price for Public Safety Operations Center. As you're aware, the old Red Cross building has been considered for upgrade to an emergency operations center. The configuration would change substantially. The project itself is a remodel, but it involves a significant amount of remodel as it relates to structural strengthening of the walls, additional concrete and steel reinforcement there, structural strengthening of the roof system. Currently, it is rated CAT four in one side of the facility, but not in the other. Significant improvements to the configuration, the programmatic configuration into the operations rooms, the bunking capacity and feeding capacity for long-term stays at the facility by first-in teams, emergency responders and other folks on first-in assignment and the like, command and control function, electronics all related to that and communications redundancy. And at the end of the day, a state-of-the-art emergency operations center for the city to work in conjunction as a forward operating platform along the coastal high hazard areas of the coastal areas of Bradenton and our surrounding coastal neighbors being the beach communities into the south and the west, obviously, and the north. The price tag is about $3.3 million on the construction itself. In this particular request is the guaranteed maximum price. That also includes what I call the soft cost and it brings the total to about $3.9 million. You may know that we, I've discussed what the mayor and I have been basically trying to get a financial partnership and assistance with the federal government and particularly Representative Buchanan's office. We had hoped to have a partnership with the state, but unfortunately, even though it was included in the budget, there was an item of veto. That was $1.4 million to pay for state assistance in this. But the good news is, is that under the federal appropriations process, Representative Buchanan has committed $1.8 million. And I tried to basically, I was able to speak with Tara Polton, who's the operations director for Representative Buchanan yesterday, and she sent me an email that she had received, and I received it late in the day, otherwise I would have included it in the package, that it says, in the short version is, "The Commerce and Justice Appropriation Committee approved the city of Bradenton's request for the $1.8 million to help fund the Public Safety Operations Center, served as a forward operating base in the event of declared emergency. Pending final approval by both the House and the Senate, this should be signed into law by late 2023 or early 2024. The funding will be distributed after that." And so that's the status we're in. We're very hopeful and we've been, we've been comforted in the fact that it's gone through a great deal of the significant aspects, the detailed aspects of the appropriation process of the federal government, and we're hoping to have the guaranteed funding sometime again late this year and early into next year. That would be 1.8 out of the $3.9 million, which leaves basically, I think it's a $2.1 million responsibility of the city. We're going to look for additional funding from the state this year for some of the generator issues for backup power out at the facility, and we're hopeful about being able to get state contribution of that. But the status is, is that currently we'd look at having to cover about half the cost of the facility, slightly, slightly more than that as it looks. They say we have reserves to pay for that, even if we had to cover the whole 3.9. We have reserves for that. Ultimately, when we look at how to fund the police station, there's different ways to do that with debt and lenders, basically. And you could wrap some of this debt on this project into sort of a larger lending plan, but I don't think we're there yet to have an aggregate total absolutely hard number. And we've been working with our financial consultants, Julie St. Marie and some other folks on that. One of the interesting things is, and you could see this in your own home personal finance section, is that we can borrow at municipal rates. And municipal rates are, even though interest rates have climbed significantly, municipal rates are still pretty competitive, maybe at four, four and a half, maybe 5%. Our reserve is earning five point... Yeah, slightly over five points. And so it might be advantageous to keep some money in reserve and to borrow a little bit because we're continuing to basically earn about the same amount of money it would cost us as an interest expense, which is the good news. And we're not locked into long-term rates like that. It's fairly short and the like, but I think that as a program goes for the city, it's worthwhile. It's been on the drawing board. It provides great public safety protection, utility. A city our size with coastal questions and issues we have as it relates to weather events, but also other events as well, probably needs to have this asset for sure. It programmatically really fits into the overall federal, state, county and local government plan. If we get hit hard out in the area, our coastal areas, we're on our own for quite some time. This facility can also, if we got hit at a city hall, serve as a backup for certain city functions and planning and plan approvals and things like that. And so we have contingency. So it's a multi-use facility located in a great area next to GT Bray and County Utilities is down there on 66th Street. Maybe perhaps the larger thing is from the rescue perspective, we have Blake Hospital and the trauma center there. The animal shelter at Bishop, of course, down the road a little bit. And so the location is really ideal for a forward frontal operating platform if we have to dig in and get some tough work done for a couple of months. And that's really what, you know, we don't have right now. And the county doesn't have it, in my opinion, either. You know, what they do is they kind of retreat back to where the emergency operations center is in that part of the county, but we're on the water pretty bad out there and along the river as well, I mean, the tire boundary. So that's where we're at. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the GMP for this project.
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to point out that I don't want to get too married to the 3.9 because the agreement provides for allowances and assumptions and I just think we need to be aware that there's going to be some ancillary costs that are going to be, you know, inevitable, I would think. So I just want to have that frame of mind that, you know, HVAC is not included, electrical wasn't addressed, but so I just want us to know that there's going to be other expenses. But that said, I'm very excited about the procurement of the federal funds. I'm very hopeful that our state will also contribute. I agree with you that it is important as we grow to be a little bit more self-sufficient when it comes to emergency disaster events. And also, I believe and I'm sure, I imagine that staff is already investigating that we're, I think we're in a moment of time where there's a lot of federal and state sustainability grants. So I would think too that there would be some potential for us to get grant funding as well.
We're working it.
Yeah, I mean, I assume, I just like to put it out there, you know?
Yeah, that's good. So is that a motion?
Sure.
Motion to approve the GMP, okay. Let me write that. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie's five to zero. Mr. Perry, anything else under new unfinished department?
I want to say thank you to everybody that participated in a great event yesterday for our Halloween costume and decoration and certainly to those departments that did as well. It was great for team building camaraderie and to have you all come down and play an important role in that and encourage it. It was great. Ultimately, the planning department, I don't want to say ran, I don't want to say ran away with it because there was some pretty good competition, but they put on a good show, a really good show. And literally it was. I didn't think we were going to have a play. Go along with it.
It was very good.
But thanks to all the departments that participated and even the police for decorating, getting us the decorations that we were able to put into the administrative area and the like, and most importantly to you guys, I think it meant a lot to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right, council reports, we'll start in Ward Four.
I just recently attended the FRA conference. This is actually more CRA hat, but there was some, many of those things are recorded, some of the sessions, so I thought I would pick some that I thought were beneficial and share them with you all through the appropriate channel. I was very pleased to participate in the Angola Festival a couple of weeks ago. I think it went really well. I think it had a very good turnout, so that was great. I appreciate the mayor also attending and having some opening words. I was very disappointed to miss the River Isles Pancake Breakfast, but I understand that it was very well-attended and I hope to make the next one. It conflicted with being away at the conference, so unfortunately I couldn't attend that one, but yeah, a lot of exciting things, I think, happening in Ward Four in particular and that's pretty much all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Coachman?
I missed a lot of that. The one thing I attended since last meeting was I did have the opportunity to go to the Bradenton Housing Authority Commission Board meeting. And as always, it's obvious that that board is working hard. You know, there are things that really need to be revamped and you're really, really working hard at that. Just wanted to say that publicly as well. I hope everyone had a great Halloween. I don't think I did. I did paperwork last night, but I think we're not going to have a meeting again. So in between that time will be another holiday Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And one last thing I want to say in terms of in general for Ward Five. In the last month or so, I've had quite a bit of different kinds of concerns brought to me by citizens in Ward Five. And a lot of it has to do with feeling neglected. And I just want to say publicly that as a city, we provide services to the public and it should be the same service for every area because it's not dependent on how much tax, how much you're taxed or how expensive your home is. The services should be equal. And I just hope that there's a way that we can convince all of the public that that's what we're doing. I think maybe if we put in our mindset, we know there's a particular part of the city that is almost pristine. And I think sometimes we may react to them differently, you know, Johnny on the spot, so to speak. And I just think we should pretend that all of Bradenton is like that pristine area in terms of how we go about service, that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Koker?
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to kind of add on a little bit. Thank you for all the efforts of all the departments that decorated. It was a lot of fun. I think it's great team building and it was just fun to be able to interact in a different way with the departments that way. So thank you for all your efforts and for including us as part of that. And yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'm excited that we're starting to kick off our street parties and I hope that everybody will come and participate and make those successful. It's just such a, we have such a special community here and part of it, actually a lot of it is the people that are here and that's what I love about this place. And so I love seeing them down on the streets, you know, dancing or, you know, eating at our establishment. So I'm glad that the weather's turning and everybody's going to feel a lot more comfortable about that. So have a safe and happy and blessed Thanksgiving and I hope y'all all come out on that Wednesday before Thanksgiving. That's always a big street party, so.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Crime Stoppers and the Braden Police Department for the opportunities that they provided for safe trick-or-treating for all of the kids in the community. Crime Stoppers was over at the Manatee River Fair Association property and BPD decorated the cop's house and did trick-or-treating at the cop's house. And I understand that everyone had a wonderful time. And it's nice, you know, when you're able to go and spend time with your kids and you feel that you're in a good environment, a safe environment and everybody can have fun. That's one of the things, I mean, when I was growing up here and we went through neighborhoods a lot, jokingly saying that the Manatee Dental Association gave out a lot of candy to get their kids to have cafes. Just a joke, no letters, please, thank you. I also wanted to say congratulations to Manatee High School, the Manatee High School, for being district champs this year. I know that the kids have worked hard and it's nice to see teamwork that meets a goal and I just want to say congratulations to them. And Thanksgiving is coming up in a few weeks here and I just want to say what I'm thankful for. I'm thankful that we're able to have these kinds of meetings and I'm thankful that citizens do come and participate when it's something that's important to them. I'm thankful that we have caring staff that always want to do the right thing at the right time. So that's what I'll be thinking about my Thanksgiving and to my colleagues, thank you. Thank you for showing up, doing your homework and caring as much as you do. So thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby. We're moving on. Now, the, obviously Halloween was a great time. It kind of was celebrated over probably about a week with different events going on in different places. Frank Bruner and Crime Stoppers always does a great job, has all, everybody out there, all the police departments and a lot of groups that really support Crime Stoppers. And when I went out there, we had a lot of our officers doing a great job and the auxiliary was there, our explorers were there, really doing that part of it. And after that, then Gina and I kind of bounced over to the cop's house and I met six of our new recruits that are in the academy. So very good-looking group, they're very excited and they're very excited with what they're going to be making as of October 1st. I think that's easy now and the police department through the chief and all her staff has done a great job at figuring out through the Braden Blues Foundation how to fund through those recruits where that's kind of how it was happening with sheriff's office and they were getting the best and now we're competing very well with our surrounding areas. We love our sheriff and all of our deputies, but we want them to be with us. So that was great. Then kind of bounced over to Village of the Arts, like I'd said earlier, and take this for what it's worth, CRA members, the parking lot on that property was well-used last night and, you know, I even used it because it was available, because it was there. So I think that's something through the CRA, we really need to figure out a plan, what's going to happen with that property because it is now the inevitable Palmetto boat ramp when you try to take it away. So, you know, we've got to figure out something to get that taken care of in a way that, you know, supports the Village of the Arts. in a way that, you know, supports the Village of the Arts while still finding parking. So I think I say it kind of tongue-in-cheek, but it's, it was nice to have it. So is there a way to, to figure that out? And Angola, being the fourth year, was, was a great event. What I, the first part of it, Friday night, was the biggest crowd that I've seen there, and it was great. We had dignitaries from the Bahamas and, and there. And what, what I was impressed to hear is they are very happy, even, you know, original founders of the whole area there and, and that. They're very happy with the way the city has done that now, and very proud of the positiveness that we have now, kind of thing. And so that was good to hear because that's definitely what I, the message I'm trying to get out, and this council is getting out. And I think we saw that yesterday with the excitement of the planning department doing their skit and going through, and everyone else really stepping up, you know, and, and doing some great decorating and, and just the fun that was had and seeing that in this building now. So, you know, that was good to see. Now the, what's the new theme for next year? Have we announced it yet? Did we announce the theme for next year?
We have not.
Okay, so we'll keep that kind of private then until the moment comes out, but.
Let them, let them, let the planning department live in their glory for a little bit.
They've already come up with the theme for that, so they'll have a whole year to plan for it almost to get ready. But no, that was great to see, and the smiles on the faces of all the employees and, and the hard work they put into it. Because it wasn't just throw on a mask like Ms. Barnaby did, but.
On their time, on their own time, too.
Yeah, so it was perfect. No, it was, it was a great event. Wish everybody, you know, thank, great Thanksgiving and being with family and enjoy that. So, and the city is, is alive and growing, and then thank Mr. Perry and all his staff for continuing to, to push the envelope, you know, because it's, there's not a day that doesn't go by that something changes or adjusts, but always working towards the positive, so. Worked, any department heads, anything? Looks like Ms. Singer's getting up. Yep. Perfect. Take your time. Cramping in the seat.
First of all, thank you for the event yesterday. It really was a great team-building exercise. Cherie Fowler, who sits at the front desk, really took the lead on that, created the script and everything, and, and rehearsed everybody. So it was great. It was really a lot of fun. We really enjoyed it. Wanted to let you know, we have a new code enforcement officer who's just started, Craig Lyman. He is coming from a law enforcement background. He, once he's up and trained, he is going to be our weekend code enforcement officer. So one weekend day, possibly each week. We'll see what the need is. And that's going to help us to address vendors, signage, and other kind of things that happen on the weekend that we can't always capture during the week. We also have a new planner. Unfortunately, Rachel Arsenal had to leave. She took a position back up in Minnesota. But we have Monica Friedel, who is going to be joining us shortly, in about a week. So you'll be seeing that face attending city council meetings as well.
Good. Thank you.
Someone left here to go to Minnesota?
That's where she came from, so.
Oh, okay. So she probably has family, and it's, she probably loves it. I just could not handle that cold.
She'll be back.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Jones?
I'd just like to thank my staff. It's been a long road. We're finally getting back up, our staffing, and it really shows. These guys are out here every day in the trenches, and they do a fantastic job. Also, I'd like to point out the engineering department, they don't get a lot of glory. They sit in their cubbies and they do their work, but they're pushing these projects such as the ASR well, the clarifier, our generator project, pushing all these forward. And I'd just like to let them know how much we appreciate them. Also, this, coming up, the 11th is Veterans Day. So just be mindful of that, that all, that gave all for us so that we can sit here today in all our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right. Well, anything else? Kiwanis is having a celebration next Tuesday for Veterans Day. So anybody that's a member of Kiwanis or a veteran, you know, we thank you for what you've done, and that's here. And obviously, look back at all, especially in the world, what's going on around our, our country and our, our nation. Prayers for all out there that are suffering now, so. Well, nothing further. We'll be adjourned.